Okay, welcome. Thank you for coming on the, in our new venue. And fortunately, it's not raining, although it's certainly, a rain shower might feel good. We start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and the flag is over your shoulder. So please stand and let's recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which this is. I'm Mike Wiseman, your moderator. I would like to start with just a moment of silence. The moment of silence is for the 100,000-plus victims that have died from the coronavirus, and also for George Floyd and the senseless, his senseless death in Minneapolis, for all the victims of racial injustice and hatred everywhere. Now I want to introduce the rest of the participants up here, starting with the selectmen. They'll introduce themselves. Tom Bergeron.
Dave Pierce.
Jeff Grabitz. Wendy Hool. Lauren Goldberg. Town Council. Finance Committee, please introduce yourself.
Eli Crowe, Chair.
Alex Kostura, Vice Chair.
Linda Forjay.
And then the school administration, if you could stand and introduce yourselves, please. Is Rick Martin here? Did I forget anybody? No. We have our state representative, Natalie Blay, here, who wants to say a few words. Come up, Natalie, please.
Well, we can always count on Mike to keep things lively. Thank you all for coming out tonight to our annual town meeting, and I want to thank our incredible Select Board for giving so much of yourselves every day, but certainly in recent weeks. Jeff, welcome to Sunderland. Glad we could have you join us right now at this particular point in time. I also want to thank everybody in town, including Wendy Hool. Where's Wendy? And certainly, Mike, for all you do for the town of Sunderland. Look, there's no doubt that these are difficult times, and I just wanted to come here tonight to say a few words, just to let you know that no matter how difficult things get, I'm still here working for you. So whether it's a question about reopening, unemployment, housing assistance, food assistance, I want you to know that you can reach out to my office at any time for assistance. You can certainly find me right down the street as well on North Main. I think you all know where I live. But I wanted to give you my contact information tonight so that you can call or email me if you need anything at all. My phone number is 413-362-9453. It's 362-9453. I keep this phone with me at all times because we know that this pandemic doesn't stop at 5:00 or on the weekends. You can also email me at natalie@blay@mahouse.gov. So please don't hesitate to reach out at any time. I want to thank the town of Sunderland for caring for one another so much, and for being here tonight to show our Commonwealth the importance of town meetings, and the lengths that we are going to, to participate in democracy. Thank you.
Oh, Natalie messed with my notebook here. Okay. So as you can tell, things are different than last year. So I'll explain some of the different procedures we have set up. We'd like everyone to remain masked unless there's a medical need. Please maintain the six-foot distance, unless you're married to the person. I think that's an exception. If someone has a concern, please let one of the police officers, ask one of the police officers for help, or move to a location where they feel safer. Santa Canza is located behind the town offices. We will use voting cards, the visual aid for all of us. So everyone has a set of three. So obviously, the green that says yes is yes. Red, no. In white is if you have a question. And then also, we will use the white card when we go through each category on the budget. If you have a hold on one particular category in the budget, hold it up, and we'll put a hold on it and revisit it when the time comes. Amendments to motions need to be in writing. I have a pen and some paper up here. So you need to submit those to us, and we can go out and send someone out to grab that from you, but it needs to be done in writing. A big thank you to all states for the sanitizer, Millstone Market for the water, FCAT and Matt Carlson for the sound system, and all of the setup. I want to make sure the town meeting clips along. It's hot out here, but we also want to ensure that people have time to ask questions and have input.
Oh, wait a minute.
I can help you. I can help you.
My kids are going to be so embarrassed. Pursuant to within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Sunderland by posting up attested copies of the same at the town office building, the Sunderland Public Library, and the Sunderland Post Office, seven days at least before the date hereof, as within directed. Frederick A. Laurinaitis, May 28, 2020, at 10:25 a.m.
Now we're looking for a motion dispense with the reading of motions. All those in favor say aye, or hold up your, practice, hold up your card. This is practice. Practice. Green card if yes. Okay. All those opposed, hold up the red card. It passes. And there's one more motion that we're doing for the first time here. It's a motion to allow school officials, town council, and other town employees permission to speak. All those in favor of that motion, hold up your green card. Those opposed, red card. It passes unanimously. I need to explain that I'm allowed to declare a two-thirds vote, but if someone disagrees with my call, all it takes is seven people to ask for another vote, and we are about to swear in some tellers, and they will go and count. So who are the tellers you're So could Liz Sullen, Lawrence Starr, Jennifer Uncles, and Bobby Ahern, please come forward and get sworn in. Can everybody hear me? Green card if yes, red card if no. Okay, that's a lot of green. There's water over here. So we are ready to go. Article one.
Dedication.
Ah, no, we're not ready to go. Scott has to speak.
Actually, Tom does first.
Tom, you want to come up?
Not really, but, okay. Thank you all for coming this evening. One of the things the Select Board has is the dedication of our annual report. And historically, the chair, a few nights before a town meeting, has the advantage of going to the person that receives the dedication, and we get to have a conversation. This year, each year, we have an opportunity recognized, to recognize an individual or group who has contributed their expertise, talents, and/or passion to the betterment of our community. Many groups or individuals have been recognized over the years, having served our town in ways that make Sunderland such a great place. This year, we'd like to dedicate our annual report to Wendy Hool, who will get up now.
Stand up, stand up, stand up, stand up.
Come up here.
Thank you.
Come up here. Wendy has served as Sunderland's Town Clerk for the last, we don't talk how many years because she'd get embarrassed, and counting. In her early career, she was committed to earning the distinguished certification of the New England Board of Massachusetts Town Clerks Association of Masters Municipal Clerk, MMC, and Certified Massachusetts Municipal Clerk, CMMC, something she achieved with her dedication and perseverance. This certification requires a variety of elements to maintain, all of which she continues to stay current with. The Town Clerk's role has many responsibilities, which starts with being the town's central information point for responding to inquiries from the public. She is pivotal as a chief election official in acting as a recording officer, register of vital statistics, registrations, and appointments, and maintains municipal code and bylaw records. Sunderland is vibrant with community participation, so the position keeps Wendy very busy. She continues to be involved in other forms of town government, volunteering for many committees that are important for the community, as well as those that fuel historical interests of the town, such as the most recent Volume III Steering Committee, the 300th Anniversary Committee, Veterans Memorial, and Park Committee, Swampfield Historical Society, and Historical Commission, to name just a few. Many times, you will find Wendy volunteering without the official appointment, and she is always assisting residents in some way, which is a testament to her love of her community and the people. In fact, Wendy, right now, volunteers to deliver meals to our seniors that can't get out and get them themselves. Be quiet. This is your, the only time I've ever been able to say that. Thank you, Wendy, for your service and being such a welcoming representative for our town.
So secondly, the selectmen have the opportunity to nominate someone for the annual town report under the guise of the spirit of Sunderland. And this year, we'd like to thank and reach out and recognize Lucy Allman. I don't know if she's here or not. Haven't seen her. There So Lucy's not just a master gardener. You've probably seen her work, not just in the center of town, but greeting travelers as they enter and pass through Sunderland. Many years, Lucy dedicated herself to flourishing the beautiful flowerbeds, each of the corners that are situated now. Over the years, the intersection layouts changed more than once. Lucy's made sure the gardens have always been the focal point as someone enters our community. She's tended to those delicate beds herself since the early days, and how many early days has that been? 19 years. That's right. And now we got her saying it in public. That's good. The vast gardens take a lot of effort to maintain, but one thing you can count on any given week in the growing season is, you'll probably see her out there, right? And that's a good thing. In addition to her gardening, Lucy's gardening in general, as well as for the town. She's maintained, been a longstanding member of the Friends of the Sunderland Public Library, president of the Board of Directors, managing the library book fund and annual plant sale, as well as offering other support roles, as an amazing advocate for the library. We want to thank Lucy for not just her past efforts, but hopefully encourage her to keep up the great work. Thanks for the spirit, Lucy. It's great.
And as a reminder, Lucy will take donations, and you can either get in touch with Lucy. It costs money to do what she does. And you can either get in touch with Lucy directly, or you can talk to somebody at the town offices, probably Wendy, and they can take your money. Very simple. Okay, anything else?
Lastly, one of the last things we do is we get to remember those, kind of like the Oscars, that's sort of the part where we remember those that we unfortunately lost in the past year. Barbara Bolden. Barbara was a valued member of the cafeteria staff and also an election officer. James Smith. Jim was a longstanding member of the Sunderland Fire Department. Richard Strikers, and I apologize if I don't do justice to everybody's names. Richard was dedicated to serve as the civil defense, for civil defense for several years. Jim Williams. Jim served on the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Land Preservation Committee. He also served on the Frontier School Committee, Solid Waste Study Committee, and most recently, the Volume III Steering Committee of the History of Sunderland. And finally, Marjorie Yurkowitz. Marjorie has enjoyed serving as a library trustee for many years. Let's take a brief moment to remember all of those that we've lost this year.
All right, I think we're ready. Did I forget anything? Okay. Except I can't find the page. Hold on a second. All right, I think it starts with number one. Article one. Motion. Anybody have any questions about Article one? All those in favor of Article one, hold up your green card, please. All those opposed, red card. Unanimously passes. Article two. Mr. Moderator, would you like to move Article two? Any questions about Article two? All those in favor of Article two, hold up your green card, please. All those opposed, red card. It passes unanimously also. Article three, which is the budget. Everybody have their copy of the budget? You guys want to make a motion on the budget, please?
Motion of Article three.
So what we've usually done is gone through the budget, line by line, in the terms of total government, total town buildings, and we will put holds on any department that people have questions about, and we'll come back and revisit them. So to put a hold on a department, use your white card. So I will just go through and hold up your white card if you have a question, and we'll come back, we'll make a mark on that. Total general government, any questions? Total town buildings, any question? Total police department, any questions? Total fire department, any questions? Total inspectors and other protection, any questions? Total highway, any questions? Total health and sanitation, any questions? Total library, any questions? Total elementary school, any questions? Do you have a hold? All right. Total Franklin County tech assessment, any questions? Total frontier assessment, any questions? Out of district tuition and transport, any questions? Total benefits and insurance, any questions? Total miscellaneous and reserve fund, any questions? Total wastewater treatment plant budget, any questions? Total debt and interest, any questions? Is that it? That's it. So I think the only hold we had was on elementary school.
We had inspectors.
You said what?
Inspectors.
All right. Sorry I missed that. You have to wag your flag high for, okay. So inspectors, question. Can we have a mic on a stick over here, please?
Just wanted to know about the, what we're getting.
Could you repeat that, Will?
There's an increase of, you know, an $11,000, and I'm wondering what we're getting.
The majority of that was the expenses for building inspections. There was, I think, about $2,000 or $3,000 for an update to the codebook, expenses for telecommunications, and travel-related expenses, and training.
The building inspector expense is way up. Does that answer your question, Will? Okay. And then there was another hold on elementary school.
Sorry, Moderator. I guess it's more of a comment. Yeah, wondering is a question. I just think that it's commendable that there's a 0% increase in a year of unknowns, and I just wanted to comment on that and wonder how that's possible.
Darius Modesto, Superintendent. We made a, we know that the state's finances, the revenues coming in, when the budget comes out in July is going to be short. How can it not be, given the shutdown of the state over the last few months? So our first effort was to come through with a level-funded budget. There is sacrifices in this budget. We did have to cut, just make sure I get my numbers correct for the correct town. We had to cut $144,000 from the budget. We're going to have to out to make the needs of students this coming fall. We're anticipating that there's going to be more, more issues with the revenues as it comes in after the state budget comes out. So this is kind of a holding spot. We did offset with some of our reserve funds, but we're also very concerned about FY '22 is supposed to be a worse year, I'm sorry, a worse year fiscally. So we're trying to do a balanced approach of cutting and using some of the reserves that we do have and keep the best program we have that we can do moving forward. And then it comes into the question of what does the program look like for next year? Right now, we just released a kind of comprehensive planning committee that we just released, actually, on Friday, to kind of develop a plan for what school looks like when we come back, and there's going to be associated costs to that, and obviously reductions as. Can I answer any questions to that if you want, or?
Hi, Greg Gachuk, Chair of the School Committee. I do want to say that that budget is more based on, again, expected revenue rather than needs. Were it not for the COVID, we were hoping to do some things for the school that we're not able to do, but in recognition of the finances we expect to see, and a lot of cleverness and hard work on the part of the teachers, the administrators, the, everyone from maintenance, IAs, we've been able to come forward with this level budget for now. I know there's still a lot of uncertainty, like we said, for, for the rest of the year and the coming year. But I did also want to just take a brief moment to say thank you to the, again, teachers, administration, and everyone else who works in the schools, because they've done a fantastic job coping with a lot of changes on short notice due to this COVID crisis.
Mr. Moderator? Just so everyone knows, Massachusetts is a little different when it comes to how it does business. Basically, we have to have a balanced budget when we vote on it, right? When you guys are voting right now, you vote on a balanced budget. There's, there's two parts to the budget. There's the expenditures that we're talking about now, and the revenue that we never really ever talk about, but it's as important as the expenditure side. We know that this coming year is going to be trying, and the state has given us two methods to deal with it. The way we're doing it today, or we could go on 1/12 budgets, we didn't feel that 1/12 budgets was fair to anybody, the schools, or us, or our departments. So that's why we went to what we're doing right now. We, we don't know what's going to happen, and Natalie is going to be a big part of that, because if revenue doesn't come in as expected, we are going to have to see changes in how the state does business. The state may actually allow us to deficit spend this year, which they have never done before. They may have, we may have to shift our, some of our resources to, or expenditures to next year, which they haven't done before. So what we tried to do between the Finance Committee, the school committees, the libraries, police, fire, highway, and the town, is to come with a reasonable budget with, with certain expectations. Right now, it's probably, I've been doing it for 20 years, and it's the most uncomfortable I've ever been with a budget, because I don't know what's going to happen. So we ask you to pay attention to what's happening around us with our, over the next year. We will probably see it again in, in the fall or, or the early winter, to talk more about budgets. But we really, we really thought that our budget that we presented right now was a responsible budget without, without right now was a responsible budget without drastic increases or drastic cuts right now. So we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Okay. I think we've answered. Any other questions lingering out there about Article 3? Okay. We are set to vote on Article 3 then, passing the budget for $8,62,617. All those in favor of Article 3, please hold up your green card. All those opposed, red card. It's unanimous. Thank you. Article 4.
Mr. Moderator? Article 4, please.
Explanation.
Mr. Moderator? In front of the body, we have the annual capital budget. Remember, it was five-ish years ago now. This is probably our fourth capital budget. It's separate than the operating budget. The motivation of doing that that many years ago was to separate out operating from long-term spending and to recognize that some long-term spending requires some debt, that some long-term spending can be done through available funds. Subsequently, the town voted a capital stabilization override. Most of the article in front of you is from that capital stabilization override, some leftover balance from a prior year, and then some sewer reserves. So as you look down the list, we're going to fund, if this vote is successful, some SCBA air packs for the fire department. We're going to pay an installment of a truck lease, of a four-year truck lease for the highway to garage. We're going to put some money in our buildings, at the library, an ADA door operator replacement, some acoustical panels, some HVAC repairs, which we've actually done each of the last minimum of three years. At this... As the town office building, that door right there is not easy to get into if you're in a wheelchair. So we're going to upgrade that door, allow access. At Frontier, this is the first year of Frontier passing a similar program, the Frontier School Committee, and this is our portion of their assessment on their annual capital plan. And it's important to bear in mind, by placing it here, the town is avoiding interest on debt being borne. So this money being expended, if all four... If in keeping with the regional agreement passes, then Frontier has this money to do repairs in their building, including this year, some floor placement, some central clock repairs, intercom repairs, and there's a very vibrant and active team working on that. I thank the administration for inviting select board members into that process. At the elementary school, a multi-year program of both some exterior repairs, that's at the base of the building where it connects to the concrete, and then that'll be multi-year. Expect to see this again. And then some floor replacement and flooring repairs. Now, again, the reason for doing this is to avoid a wholesale borrowing. Some of the life cycle of this work doesn't really mandate borrowing. It can, but it's costly. Then lastly, separate line item, the wastewater treatment plant has its own through users' fees stabilization fund, if you will, and their plan is to spend $34,000 on level controls. So people who are on the system are contributing to this, not across the entire town. So we started the year with about $115,000, and we're ending the year with just about $115,000. There's not been a year that capital hasn't equaled... Capital money raised isn't a third of what's asked. Believe us. Anybody who's seen the Capital Planning Committee minutes or seen some of the original requests, we're well behind on what's being asked for, but we do manage to pay for a little bit every year, and we're better for it by moving it off of the operating budget. So that's what you have. This comes through taxation and, in this case, as well, through the sewer reserve. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any questions? Article 4. Now, Article 4 does require a 2/3 vote because it's a stabilization fund. Question?
I just wanted to check. It looks like Frontier dropped their plans to resurface the track. Is that right?
Years, that's going to be a debt authorization through Frontier, and will be assessed debt next year.
Well, Scott, that's true, but we are also trying to push it off to after '22. So we're looking at the... So basically, last year, you authorized Frontier to take on debt. We haven't... We've started the project, meaning we have a design firm to do the track and such. They've started that work. However, looking at the budget this year and looking at the budget next year, we're hoping to do... To take the loan, so the first payment's going to be due in FY '23. They allowed you to take on the loan and then do a 14-month wait before the first payment, knowing that next year's going to be tough. We're already trying to prepare the towns, working together on that. So it is kind of the... We have slowed the projects of those capital plans because of the fiscal environment that we're in at this point.
Anything else? Any other questions? Article 4. All right. I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor of Article 4, please raise your green card. All those opposed, red card. It passes unanimously. Article 5.
To move Article 5? Mr. Moderator, I'm glad I'm wearing a mask so you won't see the grimace. So the town, as many towns across the country, were dinged by the IRS. With the help from our esteemed colleagues at Culp, Mint, and Page, we helped to get this penalty reduced quite a bit. Essentially, the assertion from the IRS was that our portion of our "health insurance contribution" was not affordable, air quotes. That said, we pay... We're 60-40 now, 65-35, excuse me, 65-35, and after some wrangling with the IRS, this is our settlement. Peter Gergaren, actually, to his credit, asked in our last meeting, is this something we can anticipate in the future? And the short answer is, probably not, but we're working toward that plan where it's considered, quote, air quotes, "affordable." So this is a penalty in real time. We fought it for a little over a year now, and we need to pay this bill. So did I capture that correctly, counsel? Thank you.
I get it. Any questions about this? Article 5. Sounds like we have to pay, whether we think we deserve to or not. Article 5, all those in favor of Article 5, green card, please. Those opposed, red card. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Article 6.
Would you like to make a motion on Article 6?
Do you want to explain this? It sounds like it's residual bills.
It is. It's just straggling bills from the prior fiscal year. We've got $181 for free cash to pay for these following bills, $60 to the state boiler inspection program, and $121.33 to the Chintas Corporation for state supplies, probably, and a few other things.
Could I... Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. There have been years... Hey, microphone!
There it goes.
There it is. So this, I actually consider a large measure of progress. There have been years in the past where paying bills in real time, we've taken the measure of having a special town meeting before the town meeting to pay those bills. Sometimes those bills have been much higher. I'd like to thank our administrative team, even with the gap in hiring, to close this year out with a whopping $181.33 of unpaid business.
So this requires a 4/5 vote. All those in favor of Article 6, raise your card, please. Green card. All those opposed, red card. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Article 7.
Mr. Moderator, would you like to move Article 7, please?
Second.
Mr. Moderator? Every year, part of the sewer wastewater treatment, we ask our operator to come up with suggestions, what we need to do, and this year, they are recommending that we spend approximately $28,000 to do some video review of our sewer lines. So basically, it's a way to find programming for FCAT. So if you want to... When we get the sewer video, we'll arrange with FCAT to put it on, and there will be hours of entertaining video of Sunderland sewers. But in all seriousness, this is actually... It's good stuff if you're a sewer guy. It helps us. The last time we did it, we identified areas that needed to be slip-lined, that we actually lined inside the pipe, that took care of what they call INI, which is infiltration of water from outside sources that was going to the sewer that we were having to treat, but we didn't need to have to treat because it was just groundwater. So this is money well spent, and it will work with FCAT, so everybody will get to see the benefit of that.
The deep, dark underground Sunderland. Any questions about this? Okay. Article 7. All those in favor, green card, please. All those opposed, red card. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Article 8.
I'd like to move Article 8, Mr. Moderator? Okay, Mr. Moderator. So...
Explain.
Yeah. This is a combination of, one, work committed by our designer-engineering firm, and then work to be completed for us to reach 100% completion designs for the North Main Street reconstruction project. The last piece of this, actually, $20,000, is for easement acquisitions, and anybody who's on North Main Street can help the town out with that. We're asking here for... I'm going to get into the project a little bit right now. We're asking for your consideration on the easement because these easements are not changing any bounds. They are only construction easements in that they will take a little bit of space during construction, and you'll have your space right back to where it was at the end of construction. So these are construction easements. This $106,000 coming from free cash puts us in our complete documents to be submitted to the DOT for the North Main Street construction based on... A great north wind occurred. So based on many meetings at the town office building with concerned citizens, changes in design, you're going to see a slightly wider North Main Street. You're going to see a slightly improved bike access on North Main Street. You're going to see improved sidewalks on North Main Street, and as equally important, we're going to see a lot of the underground work on North Main Street as part of this project. This is, back in the day, was budgeted a little over $2.3 million, and we got on the Mass TIP Traffic Improvement Plan, and this is our last piece of the required engineering work to have that happen. The goal is bid submissions, construction in '22, Jeff? Right in for '21, building in '22.
Okay. Any questions?
It's been a long and winding process.
Article 8 is a transfer from stabilization, so requires a 2/3 vote. All those in favor of Article 8, please put up your green card. All those opposed, red card. Passes unanimously. Article 9.
Motion on Article 9?
Do you want to explain?
Article 9, basically, it's a revolving fund. Most of our... Except for the building inspector, that we have us... It's typically a salaried position because he does zoning enforcement as well. The wiring inspector, plumbing inspector, Board of Health, the library community room, fire inspector, highway shared equipment, these are all funds that we're allowed to take in funds and expend funds. So we take in... We'll take in money, then we're able to use that money to pay for those... The use of those items. So it's a good deal for the town.
Any questions on Article 9? All those in favor of Article 9, green card, please. All those opposed, red card. Article 9 passes unanimously. Article 10.
Mr. Moderator, would you like to move Article 10, please?
Hi there. I'm Sarah Snyder, Chair of the Community Pres... Sorry for the crackling microphone. Does everybody have this sheet? It says, "2020 CPA proposals recommended for approval by town meeting." Please pull out this sheet. This is the guide to the next nine articles on the... That we're going to be voting on, and we're trying to keep this really efficient and get you out of the sun fast. So there's a description of each article here. Every one of these proposals has a lot of work put into it. Everyone has somebody, one of your neighbors, who's like taken leadership and put a lot of work into doing something to make our community better, and I just want to thank all the people who've stepped forward to provide leadership and put work into this. Also, the committee has put a lot of work into vetting every single proposal and taking them through a review process, revision process, and we feel very confident in every one of these after a lot of review. Everyone meets the goals that are stated for community preservation in Sunderland, and we've unanimously recommended every single one of these articles. So I encourage you to support them, and I think we'll just call each article, and if there are questions, let us know, and if not, we can just go ahead and vote.
Having a little wind delay here. All right. Where were we? Article 10. Any questions on Article 10?
So Dana Roscoe, can we just have an explanation? All of these articles are coming from the... All of these articles are coming from the funding source is CPA Open Space Reserve. How much money is in CPA Open Space Reserve? And if we approve all of these articles, what are we left with?
Please refer to your handout, the second paragraph. As of February 2020, the town had a balance of roughly $650,000 in uncommitted CPA funds. The recommended proposals, all of them, add up to just under $280,000. So if we approve them all, we will still have a balance of more than $370,000, which, before this year's collection. So we're in very good shape.
Any other questions on Article 10? Okay. Let's vote Article 10. All those in favor of Article 10, green card, please. All those opposed, red card. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Article 11.
Moderator, I'd like to move Article 11.
Do you feel you want to do any explanation on this, Sarah? No. Any questions on Article 11? It's more CPA money being used.
This piece, and I appreciate the intro about CPA and its use of funds, but this piece here actually is a partnership between us, the state, Gastral, the Water District. This is how you leverage CPA money. And this allows for the acquisition of a large parcel of land adjacent to Hubbard Wells? Yeah. About $240-plus thousand of total commitment across multiple groups, of which the town's committing $64,000 to give us a large buffer around one of our drinking water wellheads. And that's really the perfect, pitch-perfect application of what CPA can do. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
You're welcome. Any questions on Article 11? All those in favor of Article 11, green card, please. All those opposed, red card. Article 11 passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, Article 12.
Second.
Any questions on Article 12? No? All those in favor of Article 12, green card, please. All those opposed, red card. Declare it passed unanimously. Oh, one. One. They're passed by majority. Where were we, on Article 12? Now we're on 13, okay. 13. Article 13.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article 13, please.
Second.
Any questions on Article 13? Seeing none, it's time to vote. Article 13, green card. If you're in favor, red card if you're opposed. I declare Article 13 passes unanimously. Thank you. Article 14.
Sorry.
One of you guys?
Like to move. Yeah, move Article 14. Sorry. Chuckling under my mask.
Nice thing about a mask.
Yeah, exactly.
Article, what are we, Article 14? Any questions on Article 14? Okay. All those in favor of Article 14, green card, please. All those opposed, red card. Declare it passed by majority. Article 16.
Nope, 15.
Oh, 15.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article 15.
15, okay. 15 it is. Any questions on Article 15? Okay, all those in favor of Article 15, green card, please. All those opposed, red card. Declare it passed by majority. Article 16.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article 16, please.
Second.
Any questions on Article 16? Aaron.
Hi, I just happened to notice that there was one dissenting opinion on the select board, and I'm just curious as to what the concerns were.
Moderator, if I could, I was the dissenting vote on Article 16, not the fact that it would be included, but as a non-recommend. I think that financing costs should be built in the projects upfront. The town has never gone forward with some kind of project and not included financing costs. And I feel it's poor management. Thank you.
Any other questions on Article 16? No, can't hear you.
What happens if we don't pay the financing costs?
We'll pay the financing costs some way.
The financing costs have already been paid. If we fund them in this way, we get them for half price, basically, because of the fact that our CPA funds are matched.
That's actually a very, a very good question. And we kind of had talked about it before. The state of Massachusetts makes sure that we pay for everything. So we have to have the money before we can buy anything. So that's why the financing charges have already been paid. This is trying to finish off the project the way it was originally designed. And that's why we're looking for those financing charges right now.
Any other questions on Article 16? Okay. All those in favor of Article 16, green card, please. All those opposed. Declare it passes unanimously. Article 17.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article 17, please.
Second.
Any questions on Article 17?
Mr. Moderator, if I may. Basically, what the town of Sunderland would like to do is you'd like to use $50,000 from our CPA funds, which is allowed by the state, to help individuals or families that are unable to pay rent during this time of COVID, so that either, basically, they may not be able to afford the rent or whatever. And this would be able to pay for that. We are partnered with, it's not the board, the select board doesn't make that determination. We go through RDI, who manage the program for us, so that we will be able to help out our fellow residents in town.
Hi, everybody. Mike Judy Pierce. My question is, are these grants or loans?
These are grants. Basically, they will not pay them back.
Any other questions on Article 17? Okay. All those in favor of Article 17, green card, please. All those opposed, red card. Declare it passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article 18. And this is one of the normal annual operating articles for the CPA, where we allocate money to each of the respective categories.
Second.
There we go. Any questions on Article 18? This is kind of a housekeeping accounting process that we do every year.
Mr. Chair, Moderator. Jennifer Uncles could spend the next three hours explaining to anybody if they'd like to listen. Because I think she's the only one that understands this, and Peter.
Okay, Article 18, any questions? Okay, all those in favor of Article 18, green card, please. All those opposed, red card. Passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article 19, please.
Second.
Have any ques- this is a long article. Any questions on Article 19? You want to give?
Go ahead, Scott.
Article 19 is basically required in order to apply for a part grant. The state wants to make sure that the community is committed to it. The actual funds that will be used to do the municipal match are the CPA funds that have also already been approved. So essentially, no money will be committed unless we get the grant at 68% or more from the state.
Are there any questions about that or the process? Okay. All those in favor of Article 18, green card. All those opposed, red card. Passes by majority. Oh. I declare a two-thirds vote on that one.
That was worth the trip.
Article 20.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move Article 20. Planning Board?
Do you have any explanation, Dana?
Hi, Dana Roscoe from the Planning Board. So there's a list, a handout in your package that outlines seven proposed changes to the bylaw. So the bylaw is not fixed in stone. We can come back and revisit it, and we do. At most town meetings, we have one or two proposals from the Planning Board to change our bylaws. You'll note that most of these are typographical errors or insignificant corrections. Thank you to Sarah Schneider, Snyder on the board, and Steve Schneider unrelated on the board, who read, proofread our bylaws and have flagged these proposed changes, most of them. So number one, typographical error. Reserve is the way it reads. Preserve is the way it should read. Number two, typographical error. The word apart should be two words, a part. Number three, in the business use table, currently, as it stands, storage and warehousing in the Village Center is allowed by a special permit. What's being proposed is that special permit be changed to not allowed in the Village Center. There are two storage warehousing facilities in town today. Both of those are located in the commercial zone, so it will not impact any existing business as it is today. Number four is just, again, it's a typographical error. The footnote is not referring to everything it should, so it's completely a very minimal but important change. Number five, there's a duplicate colon. Number six. I see, we can't have too many colons. Number six is just rewording a very difficult passage to make it quite a bit more understandable. And the way it currently exists and the way it's proposed to be written are outlined there for you to see. And finally, number seven, correction of a typographical error, change the word follow to the word following. And that's the extent of these proposed changes. Thank you.
Thanks, Dana. Are there any questions on that? There he is, Bob.
I was just wondering about the storage unit. Are you changing, so if a person wanted to add on to storage that he wouldn't be able to add on anymore?
Dana. So as I said, there are two existing storage facilities. There's one out across from 711, and then there's the one in the center of town. Both of them are in the commercial district. The one that is in the center of town, were it to expand, it's still, the lot has land in both the commercial zone and the Village Residential. My understanding of the permit that they've been issued is that there are wetland constraints that prohibit them from expanding beyond their existing footprint. I'm not on the Conservation Commission, but that's my understanding of that existing property.
Any other questions on Article 20? Okay. All those in favor of Article 20, green card, please. All those opposed, red card. Declare it passes unanimously. So Articles 21 through 26 are what they call consent articles, and we usually vote them as a block. If anyone has any questions about those, but they're pretty standard. Every year, we do the same. Scott? Dave?
Just like to make a move on that. And it's basically the articles that allow us to function as a town and keep the business running.
Motion, a second. There we go. Any questions on those articles, and we'll vote them all together. All those in favor of Articles 21 through 26, the consent articles, green card, please. Anyone opposed, a red card. Passes unanimously. I think we might be nearing the end. You gentlemen have anything else to add? I was figuring on eight o'clock, but I'm... So we need one more motion.
Make a motion to dissolve, please.
A second.
All those in favor, green card. Anyone opposed?
Bob?
Passes unanimously. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.